The time is now 7:30. We'll call the meeting to order of the Leonia Board of Education for the September 17th meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Lees. Adequate notice of tonight's meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the following methods: distribution of notice to the record, and posting of the agenda on the school district website, and through Parent Square. Sorry, I did that a little bit out of order. Committee of Roll Call, please.
Ms. Choice?
Hi, sir.
Dr. Mista?
Here.
Ms. Molina?
Present.
Mr. Park?
Present.
Mrs. Depka?
Present.
Mr. Segal? Ms. Thompson?
President.
Ms. Wilds?
President.
Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Present.
We have a quorum. Also in attendance is our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Brian Gaitens, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Exanti Karamanos, as well as our Board Attorney, Mr. Vic LaPera, as well as our three student reps, Chan Hong, Doan Kim, and Renee Kim.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our first public comment section on agenda items. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, provide your name and address.
Push to talk. Arthur's at 125 Rldes Avenue. I only have one item, and that has to do with the cameras that are being put in the buses. I'd like an explanation as to how they're going to work. Is it going to be simply a recording on a chip? Are they going to be monitored live? Is it going to be... I saw there was something about Wi-Fi, but is anybody going to monitor it? Is there a panic function in it in the event there's an accident or somebody... There's a wild activity on the bus that needs immediate intervention. So I just want a brief explanation for what that is. I think it's a good idea, but I just don't know how it works. You know, if it's just a chip and, you know, review the facts after, that's kind of expensive. I think I'd rather have a live capability of it. And that's pretty much it. I had other questions answered earlier, and I'm not terribly prepared today. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So we are getting cameras. So tonight at the... We'll notice on the board agenda that there's an approval of cameras purchased. The approval tonight, order, we're expected to get them in by mid to late October will be the end of the installation. The cameras, first things first, the cameras in the buses have a variety of angles, right? So it's an internal camera to the bus showing both the back and the rear of the bus, also exterior camera showing in the front of the bus there. In terms of Wi-Fi, we do have the ability, if necessary, to livestream the bus if we feel important. We could actually have what's going on in the bus livestream directly back to our server, back at the Board of Open Sin High School, and whatever school we could see all of that. I don't know the answer to the panic button, but I'll find out, and I'll get back to you on that. One thing we will do is that following the installation of the cameras, we're going to create a public-facing communication, where we let the community know that the cameras exist, the cameras are there. I think Mr. LaPere probably likes that, and it's good to let people know that the cameras are present in the buses, and we'll outline how the cameras work. Besides the live Wi-Fi function, if necessary, when the cameras come back into the school, if they're parked close enough to the school, the information is downloaded via Wi-Fi into the district servers. There's also a card that we could pull if we need to get the information out. So a very robust camera system on the buses, and much more to follow.
Thank you. That brings us to our public presentations.
So we have two presentations this evening. Ms. Jenna Russo will present the annual requirement of the NJ DOE School Self-Assessment for Grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, followed by Dot Karamanos, who will give Part Two, the sequel to Assessment Results Presentation, Spring 2024 Administration. Ms. Russo, the floor is yours.
The whole time? Okay.
Wait, keep it on.
Thank you for that tip. The ABR grade, the anti-bullying rights grade for each school will be determined primarily through a self-assessment that each school completed. This self-assessment must be made available for public comment, which is why we're presenting tonight and approved by the District Board of Education. The Chief School Administrator, Dr. Gaitens, will be required to certify the electronic submission of each school's self-assessment and statement of assurances. The school district's grade will be the average of the grades of each school in the district. The criteria for scoring is zero equals does not meet the requirements, one equals partially meets the requirements, two equals meets all requirements, three equals exceeds all requirements. And not to give you a sneak peek, but I will tell you, we at least met all requirements for all the questions asked, and you'll see what the scores are in a moment. So for the school self-assessment, the core elements included number one, which includes all HIB programs, approaches, or other initiatives. Out of 15 possible points, ACS reported 13, LMS reported 10, LHS reported 14. For number two, the question related to training on the BOE-approved HIB policy. And out of nine possible points, all schools met criteria with six. For ACS, LMS had six, and LHS rated themselves seven. For number three, other staff instruction and training programs, out of 15 possible points, ACS rated themselves 12 out of the 15, LMS nine, and LHS 13. Curriculum and Instruction on HIV and Related Info and Skills was, out of a six possible points, ACS rated themselves six, LMS four, and LHS five. Regarding HIB personnel, out of nine possible points, ACS rated themselves nine, LMS rated seven, and LHS seven. Number six was school-level HIB incident reporting procedure. Out of six possible points, ACS rated themselves five, LMS four, and LHS six. For number seven, on HIB investigation procedure, out of 12 possible points, ACS rated themselves eight, LMS 10, and LHS 12. And number eight, for HIB reporting, out of six possible points, ACS rated themselves four, LMS five, and LHS five. For the totals, out of 78 possible points, and I will tell you, in order to meet all standards, it would be 52 points, and 67%. So out of 78 total possible points, ACS rated 63 points, which equates to 81%. LMS rated themselves 55 points, which equates to 71%. And LHS rated themselves 69 points, and that was 88%. So the district average is 80%. Like I said before, the grades are all above meeting standards. And luckily, it doesn't match grades for our students, because the 67% doesn't sound like it meets standards, but here it does. Then with regards to school-based action items, the programs that we have that help address proactive approaches to preventing HIB are things like continuing with building-based social-emotional learning programs and activities, such as the wellness fairs that we have at LMS and LHS, the campfires at ACS, the Mental Health Awareness Club at LHS, and Wellness Club at LMS, the HIB learning groups at LMS, the Week of Respect, which will be district-wide, there'll be dedicated wellness fairs at back-to-school nights district-wide, and fourth and fifth grade transition meetings for ACS and LMS. LMS and LHS also held dedicated grade-level meetings to review expectations, offer positive reinforcement, and foster a positive school community. We also have continuing support from our district mental health and wellness coordinator in terms of program development, training, and student social groups to support wellness. That coordinator often was very helpful in terms of intervention plans following HIB, but also programs to prevent HIB. Provide training opportunities to anti-bullying specialists and the school safety climate teams on HIV topics. We also have opening day faculty and staff meetings that included specific reference to HIB policies and expectations to set off the year the right way. District and school webpages have been updated to provide information of resources, and we have wellness resources for families and students that we share regularly through methods like Stop It newsletters via Parent Square, I saw the message that went out today, Epic Parenting Program, student assemblies, and awareness events. In terms of information going forward, the NJ DOE will create district and school grade reports of the district reporting readings for each core element for each school and for the school and district grades. Districts and schools are required to do the following: Each school must post the grade received by the school and the school district on the homepage of the school's website, as well as on the district page, district-wide. Districts and schools must post the grades on the websites within 10 days of the NJ DOE notification that the grades are available. Districts and schools must use the district and school grade reports for posting on their appropriate websites. And school district officials are required to review the school and district grades with the BOE at a public meeting. We're doing that tonight. This will provide the BOE and the public with the opportunity to learn about the district's implementation of the ABR and address any concerns. There's my contact information, and I'm here for any questions that you may have. So the... Sure. So the HIB specialists for each building meets with the climate team, and they review the questions and talk together about the responses in terms of self-assessing for the school. I've only been here a couple of years, but in the past couple of years, they... So between like last year and this year, they did drop just slightly by maybe 1%, 2% for each school, nothing significant. And it could change year to year. Obviously, if you're reading with any integrity, you're not going to have stagnant scores. They're going to shift up or down depending on the programs that you may have. For instance, some years, we might have more emphasis on community, or on police, or on families, you know? And some of it is consistent. You know, we certainly meet, at least meet the requirements each time, each year. But it is something that we are looking at to improve, to look at where are the areas that we rated ourselves a little bit lower so that we can improve for the following time that we rate.
I have a question. So the reporting requirements by NJ DOE, that is, the reporting from the self-assessment, or do they actually review it, endorse it? Is there any...
We usually don't hear back from NJ DOE on the self-assessment.
Self-reporting.
Yes.
But reporting is a requirement mandatory. We have to post it.
Exactly.
Is there like a particular reason that... Because I ordered the score, I mean, the LMS seems to be the kind of lowest among those by far. Is there any explanation for that?
I can start with that first. So LMS did a wide variety of training several years ago. And so their... But their score was on the higher side. They'd done those student trainings, and because they don't have the trainings last year, because they'd done them previous years, their score dropped in relation to previous years.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just so add that they did a lot of training. They did. They did a lot with students, a lot of interventions. But in terms of the self-assessment, sometimes the questions, when you read them, you see that they're looking at, did you involve the police in training? And they might not have that particular year, but they did the year prior. So it's not necessarily something that, you know, obviously is required each year. But they definitely are looking at areas to improve and focusing in on them. Like I said, they do have a wide variety of interventions that they have in place, and programs that they are looking to, you know, to help proactively prevent further incidents. Thanks for sharing that. So I do want to just reiterate that when you say that we did not have 100% compliance, to me, compliance would be meeting standards, and so we do have at least that. But you're right, there is room for growth, and that is something that we're striving for. We are going to be continuing to look at the areas where we rated ourselves lower, areas that we could improve, and target those areas with action plans. No, no, no. I don't take it personally. But I do agree, obviously, none of us want bullying to be occurring in our schools, and we want everyone to feel safe and part of the community, and be welcomed, and be in an environment that's really open for learning. So we do take it seriously. It's not necessarily just about the numbers. We want, you know, we want to make sure that everyone is safe in our schools. So regardless of numbers, yes, there are areas to grow, and we are looking at making those numbers grow, as well as having our programs improve and grow as well.
I concur with you, Arthur. It's good... On one hand, I applaud the schools for being very thoughtful and being part of themselves in regards to the programs they offer, making certain they're not juke-ing these numbers, right? They could walk in here, and they could say we're 90% across the board, and there's no data that shows that we're not, right? So credit for that. On the other hand, there's still a clear path to doing a better job when it comes to this, and therefore, the better we do that, the more likely we accept the correlation between a decrease in harassment, intimidation, and bullying events that we're seeing. It's worked for the context of the conversation, that I applaud the administrators and the climate teams for having such a high level of honesty. But it does provide an opportunity for growth for them. And when they were... And to be very clear about this, they report these numbers to the board office, the board office then reports to the board chief. We do not get involved in the school-based work. It would be unethical for me to push myself into that. But very clearly, when they did the self-assessment, and they saw the scores that they had, it provides an opportunity for them to be reflective upon their practice, and the fact that this receives a lot of attention at the board level, which then they can then grow from there. So we're in agreement with that, and it provides an opportunity for them to do better. So thank you for that.
I was just curious, Jenna, and thank you for the presentation. I'm not... I don't think you went over, but what happens if we don't meet standard? Like, is that reported anywhere, or does that go up to anyone? Does it have any implications?
So I've not been involved in a situation where we didn't meet standards, or, you know, sort of got targeted, you know, with outside action plans that were needed. I'm not aware of that happening. I'm not sure if you are, Dr. Gaitens?
Yeah, it's... It'd be tough. It'd be difficult to find a Board of Education, a school district that says we didn't do the job we're supposed to do, right? So most likely, they don't report that. What this plays a role is, and this is why we're very thoughtful about being truthful and filling this out the way it's supposed to be filled out, is that if there's a significant complaint against the district regarding HIV, one thing the state does when investigating that complaint is that they go back and they push into how these numbers were determined, right? So if a district says that they were, we were all 98s across the board, and things were beautiful, and it's high fives for everybody, and then there's significant complaints that are coming in, the state will then hold the district's feet to the fire and say, where did you get that number from? How'd you get to that number? And so that's the counterbalance to running up artificially high numbers, that if there's issues, the process in which you determine those numbers becomes a point of conversation. So it actually helps a school district to be tougher on themselves, because if their ever question ever brought into the practice, they were very thorough and efficient determining those numbers. That's where it comes from. Of the 600 districts in the state, I don't think a single one at this forum said that we didn't meet the standard. I'd be shocked by that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
So it's two for one tonight, Ms. Russo. She's also going to... So as part of our Part Two of our assessment presentation, Ms. Russo will switch gears and will present on the DLM. We're going a bit out of order on the presentations, just to give her a chance to be done with her presentations and then be done for the evening.
So this is Part Two, like we said. So now I'm wearing my other hat. Here I'm the Director of Special Services, putting on the Dynamic Learning Maps, which is the alternate assessment for special education students who do not take the state's standardized testing. I'm going to see if I can operate with two hands. Okay. So the DLM replaces the NJSLA, or the NJGPA, depending on the grade level, for students with significant intellectual disabilities and/or developmental disabilities. So it's a small percentage of students that take these tests. The DLM assessments offer DLM-eligible students a way to show what they know and what they can do in language arts, mathematics, and science. Students assessed include in-district students, as well as students we receive from other districts, and we are assessed... We assess in these areas depending on the grade. So language arts gets tested in grades three through eight, plus grade 11. Mathematics gets tested in grades three through eight and 11 as well. Science is only tested in grades five, eight, and 11. The ratings include emerging level, which are when students demonstrate emerging understanding of and ability to apply content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements. The approaching target rating would be when students understand and have the ability to apply targeted content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements is approaching the target. At-target means that the students meet the target. So their understanding of and ability to apply content knowledge and skills are represented by the essential elements that is at-target. And advanced is when students represent abilities and knowledge that is above the essential element target. The district results from last school year in 2324 for each of the subject areas cannot be reported, because you cannot report when publicly when the group is less than 20, and our groups have been less than 20. So we have only asterisks here. But we still do, as a district, analyze the results and look to see areas that we can continue to grow and improve. And our interventions and strategies, we have teachers meeting in PLCs across grade levels in elementary, focusing on reviewing the data and using the data to drive instruction. On a district level, we're, you know, focusing a lot on our data, our professional development plan. We look at incremental growth and overall meaningful growth from year to year for each child. We utilize multisensory modalities to deepen understanding of concepts. Teachers work on transferring skills across settings. We know that that deepens understanding and knowledge and skills when students are able to perform skills outside of just one setting, that they can use it in different classes or in the community. And we also have added additional instructional resources, including ARIS, Lexia, Unique Learning System, and News2U. And that is it for the area of DLM. Are there any questions? Right. So for my... For this part, the individual student reports were sent out. So they get sent out for all the state tests, but I'm just speaking to the part that... So there's, depending on their needs and what the evaluation teams determine are the areas that students need the most support in, the teams develop individualized goals. So they look very different from student to student. In terms of DLM, the... So all students have grade-level student learning standards, right? For DLM, I mentioned in here with the term essential elements. So the essential elements is taking apart the standard and looking at what is the essential element of that standard. What... So a student with an IEP who has a developmental disability may not necessarily be able to achieve the full standard, but the target is to look at what is the essential part of that standard that is most important for that student to learn. So that part, it's still grade level in terms of looking at what is expected for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Thank you all. Have a good night. So if you remember back in August, I did the part one of the session where we talked, the assessment presentation where we talked about. Yeah, we talked about M D S L A and. Today, I will review the rap set of our. And we set a yellow and. So this, some of this information is that. All the four P O L have seemed to be based before a lot of the information is competitive, particularly the same assessment that we did in the past. M D S L A is statewide computer-based assessment that assesses progress towards the learning standards that are the. Standards that were required to submit. Uh, things English, 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 and with arts. They focus on writing effectively when they're analyzing text. That's really the big piece of the E L A assessment. In math, it's a lot about applying skills to real-world problems. And then science, they're investigating, sentiment, and. So the first, for the first part of this presentation, I'm gonna go through the M J S L A, E L A, and math. And then I'll do science. The E L A and math have the same, the same performance level. So those are scored out of five levels. Level one being did not meet expectations and level five exceeding expectation. Whenever we talk about students meeting expectations, we're talking about level four and five, so they're meeting. If a student scores a level one to three, that means they have not met the expectation.
Okay. So before we get into the data, we'll just go over some of the overall district achievements that we've seen. First being that we are continuing to see positive growth. When, when we get into the actual data, you'll see, you'll see growth over time, over the past few years, especially post-COVID. Our scores keep increasing, which is great to see. We see that our students and our staff are really working hard and really focusing on getting, getting back that, getting towards positive growth in, in all of our different assessments. We are still scoring higher than the state. You know, we talk about that often, but we are still scoring higher than the state. We are seeing positive growth in subgroups. And like I said, we're, we're moving towards pre-COVID proficiency levels. And then some of the district interventions and strategies that we've been putting into place and that we're continuing to put into place. We've been having, we've been focusing a lot on our multi-tiered systems of supports. So what type of supports do we have for the different learners' needs that we have in our schools and in our district? We've, we're in our, we're launching our EduClima platform, which is a data warehousing software, which will be a platform, which is a platform where staff and administrators, all staff, can see students, a whole picture of a child in one screen versus trying to go to all these different locations for different types of, different pieces of data. We continue with our high-quality professional development and that's through different types. We have staff developers that come in. We have, we send staff to conferences, to workshops. We have different organizations that we're a part of that provide opportunities for networking to staff and sharing best practices. And then probably the, one of the most important pieces is that we do a really good job telling them, you know, providing staff with time and resources. You know, most districts, you know, they give the resources, but they don't give that time. And you know, we, we use our two duties and we use our time with staff to give them the room to review these. So they have all this data, they have access to EduClima, they have access to assessments, they have all this stuff. But then they don't have that time to, to actually look at it. So our, you know, the one way that we feel we support staff is giving them that time and giving them those, those opportunities. And then implementing, implementing high-quality instructional programs. So we've done a lot of work around our instructional programs and how, which programs really provide effective results for students and then how those programs are linking data. So we're looking at programs that connect with each other versus just being one program for this, one program for another. We're looking at programs that work together so that way we're not getting different pieces of data from all these different programs. Okay. So we're gonna start with E L A. So these are our major notable achievements. Overall, you'll see a one-point-three percent increase in students who met or exceeded expectations. And then we broke down by grade level, all the different growth. We did focus last year in literary, literary and vocabulary development. That was one of the focuses that we had through our professional development. So you'll see some growth in those areas. And then we'll go into participation rates. So you'll see participation rates vary throughout the years. Participation, we're very close to a hundred percent. Participation really comes from, from students, student refusals. Students are still allowed to refuse the N J S L A assessment, so they don't have to sit for the assessment. If their parent, guardian, or caregiver chooses not to, they write a letter and then they, they don't sit for the assessment. Which is very rare, but it does happen, which is why we're not at one hundred percent across the board. It also, the E L A numbers you'll see when we get into math are slightly different than the math numbers because there are some, when multilingual, when students that are identified as multilingual learners come into the district, they're exempt from portions of the E L A assessment. Okay. So this is our district comparison, multi-year comparison. So you'll see twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen are our pre-COVID scores. And then you'll see in twenty-twenty-four, we score sixty-nine-point-nine percent of students in grades three to nine scored at meeting or exceeding expectations on the assessment. So you'll see continuous growth towards proficiency. This is a comparison of students versus state. So you'll see Leonia, you'll see the district score in the maroon. And then you'll see the state scores in gray. So like I said in the beginning, we are consistently scoring above the state, the state averages. So now I'm gonna go into the cohort comparison. So this is, this, the next few slides compares the students. So in the last few slides, we're comparing the whole, as a whole. But now we're looking at cohorts of students. So this is for, these are current fifth graders for the class of twenty-thirty-two. These are current fifth graders. So in twenty-twenty-three, they took the N J S L A in grade three. And then this group in twenty-twenty-four, so in the spring, were grade four, and they took the N J S L A as fourth graders. And then in twenty-twenty-five, they'll be fifth graders. So next year you'll see them on the fifth grade slide. So you'll see the growth across the grade here, which we love to see. That's significant growth. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, absolutely. You know, as we're getting post-COVID too, you know, we're starting to see a lot of this. And we did a lot of work with third and fourth grade teachers last year on vocabulary and literary work. So you'll, hopefully we'll see more of that. So students in grade, so this is current sixth graders. So last year's fifth grade. So you'll see their third grade score, their fifth grade score, and then their fourth grade score, and then their fifth grade score. We do, this is actually, so you'll see, if you look at a lot of test scores across districts, you'll see in transition years, you'll see a lot of dips in scores just because of that transition plays a big role, is a big variable in the assessments. We are very proud that we did not see a dip here. We're very happy to see that our grade four and fives, our teachers in grades four and five are consistent in their practices and being able to support that transition. And L M S is, you know, as you know, is tricky because we have two transitions in one school. So it becomes a little hard to see that over time. So this is our current seventh graders. So you'll see in fourth grade and then fifth grade, they transitioned to L M S. And then from L M S, grade five to grade six, their score increased seventy-eight-point-seven percent. And now they're our current seventh grader. So we expect the same thing this year too. And these are our current eighth graders. So this similar score, so no major dip here. Sure. We not have, we, right, it's not the, it's great. So that's, that's part of the reason why we'll see some changes in our scores in grade seven and up because of the population addition of our Edgewater residents. But, you know, we don't differentiate, we don't separate them out because they become our students in seventh grade, so. So I don't know if we can repu, report that publicly, but that's definitely something. And we do do that through different modes of assessment. Like we look at that through our STAR assessments. Edgewater in the past was using STAR. So we, we've been able to use a similar common assessment to be able to support that learning. We've, they've been using it since twenty, we've both been using STAR since twenty nineteen, have multiple years. They've moved away from it at this point, but we're gonna continue using it. So we still have that information. But I don't think public reporting, because they're not, you know, with confidentiality rights and everything, we can't publicly report and compare Edgewater scores before seventh grade. But it is something we do internally. And then grade nine. So the, this is current grade nine students. So this was last year. So. And then these are our current grade ten. So this is our freshman, which this, the dip in eighth and ninth grade is something that we see again. A lot of it is due to the fact that they're transitioning to a whole new building, whole new expectations. So we do see that across the board usually. And just as we do every year, we have to report on our subgroup data. And the subgroups we report on are gender, race, ethnicity, and this, and then certain special programs. So we use, we report on students identified as economically disadvantaged, students with I E Ps, students with five oh fours, and multilingual learners. There are, as Jenna said, there's a reporting minimum. You have to have at least ten students in a reporting group to be able to report out publicly. So these four groups, we do not have more than ten students in these groups, so we cannot report them publicly. So they are not on the next graph. So you'll see gray, in the gray is twenty-twenty-three, and then in the maroon is twenty-twenty-four. So you'll see we're right about there. You know, there's not much of a difference between the two years. We really dive into this data when we're working with the administrators and with the teachers to really pinpoint, like this is, this is overall data, but when we dive into it, we look really deeper into it, like specifically how many levels, you know, what, you know, what grade levels these are and and really dive into that data that, that way. And then these are a comparison of our special programs. So again, not much of a difference in the scores, which is good, but also something that we're continuing to monitor and look at. And our interventions and improvements. So over the last, over the past summer, we've done a lot of curriculum revisions to meet the new N J S L, uh, N J S L S, the standards. The N J D O E had new standards for this year. And those standards focused on grammar and vocabulary and put more of an emphasis on K-five phonics. And then there was an overall realignment of the K-12 standards, like which standards went to which grade levels. So we did a lot of that work over the summer with the teachers and we're continuing to build on those unit plans and those curriculum documents throughout the school year. We're continuing professional development. Last year we did multisensory reading P D with the three to five, grade three to five staff. This year we are take, we are doing that P D with K to two. So then everyone at A C S will have that multisensory reading professional development. We're also continuing the, the professional development on differentiating for our multilingual learners. We've been picking departments. So we're just moving on to the next department in L M S and L H S to be able to support that sheltered English instruction. And then we're continuing to roll out different platforms to be able to analyze the data across the platforms. So some of our P D this year will be focused on how do we use the different platforms that we have to make sense of the data that we have. And then programs that we are continuing and some new programs, the after-school tutoring through the High Impact Tutoring Grant that we have, we'll continue after-school tutoring opportunities. We are, we did revamp our credit recovery program. So that will be launching this year to be able to better support students in credit recovery through alternative pathways. And that platform we use is Imagine Learning. And then the additional resources that we've added. This is our second year with Lexia, so teachers are just getting comfortable with that program. And then we've added NoRed Inc., Diffit. We're piloting Age of Learning, and we have NearPod and D N A, which is an assessment tool. Any questions on E L A before I move to math? That's a great question. So the state does not provide that information. However, someone from somewhere in New Jersey coded this website last school year with last year's data compared, that you could compare basically districts, you could choose which district. So I could choose, right, so you could choose Leonia compared to Powell Park and you could as many comparisons as you wanted. You could create, you could do countywide, you could do schoolwide, and then a crop. So we're all hoping, all of us, all of the administrators in Bergen County, we're all hoping that person codes that website again, because that's the only way we get that data. The state does not provide that and does not readily support us in that. Yep. Right, right, right. It's hard when you're, like, it's great that we meet, that we're above the state standards, but I expect to be above the state standards and, you know, that's, that's a. Right, right. So hopefully it encodes that website again, so that way we have that information. Any other E L A questions? So math. So math is the same as E L A in terms of scoring. Oh, and the, so to go back to Maria's question earlier, the way that we can't send out the reports until we get the official copies from the state, so those just arrived to the board office on Monday. So those will be sent out, you know, we have, they, they're, we, Dr. Gaines signed the letter today. They're getting packed and ready to ship and they will be shipped out by the end of the week, hopefully, in the next few days. Yeah. So they're coming. But yeah, we have to, we can't release any of that information until it's provided by the state. So these are the notable achievements you'll see for math. Spent a lot of time last year for math on modeling and reasoning. Our middle school and high school teachers went to a lot of sessions with adults from conch addicts. She did a lot of work with our staff on modeling and reasoning. So we're very excited that we did see growth in those areas. And participation rates. So you'll see here, like I said earlier, these are based on, you know, parent refusals. And then they're different than the E L A because multilingual learners have some opportunities for exemptions in the E L A that they don't have for, for math. So this is our five-year or multi-year comparison. So we're inching our way closer to our pre-COVID numbers. We're very excited that our math score is going up. A lot of districts around us aren't seeing the same successes, but we are very proud of the work that we're doing in math and the, the team that is, you know, kind of looking at the standards and working on all these revisions that we've been doing. So we're really proud of this work. Here's the state comparison. You'll see Leonia is in the maroon and then the state is in the gray. And as a reminder, you'll see the dip in that seventh, eighth grade because stu, that's where students are taking other events outside of their grade level assessment. So in grade seven, if students have the option to take, or if they take an advanced course, they can take the, either the grade seven assessment. If they're in, if they take Algebra One that year, they take the Algebra One assessment. So they're excluded from seven assessment. So the scores, like the grade six scores, there's, the, the, it's not the same group of kids in grade six that go to grade seven, and then grade eight is the same. And I'll show you, when we get into the cohort, I'll be able to show that a little bit better. Speaking of the cohort. So this starts the same cohort analysis as we did for E L A. So you'll see this is our current fifth graders from grade three to four. Our current sixth graders going from grade three, four to five. This is our current seventh graders. So this is, so this was our current. So this is, so this was our current seventh grade. This is the last year that they are, they all took the grade six assessment. Group of kids moving forward will now be separated into different assessments. So this graph, what we did here to, to better show the actual scores of the students over time, we took out any students that were, that took an advanced course and that did not take the grade seven assessment. So if a student took in grade seven, instead of taking the grade seven assessment, took an Algebra I, we removed them, in this graph, we removed them from the grade six and the grade five, so that way we could see how the actual cohort of students is progressing over time. And we did the same thing for grade eight. So this is, grade eight students have the option after grade seven, if they take Algebra I in grade seven, they can take geometry in grade eight. So we took, we removed those kids from the grade six assessments, so we can also see just the cohort, the true cohort of students. And these are current freshmen. So same as our ELA, we report on, and then there were the same four subgroups that we couldn't report on in ELA. We can't report on because they do not meet the minimum reporting size, so you'll see them at the bottom. And here is the, our subgroup report. And then this is our, our special programs. And now the interventions and the improvements that we've done in our math department. Similar to ELA, the state also released new math standards that were for implementation for September. So we spent the la-, the end of last year and the summer working on the new math standards. So we, again, realignment of the K12 standards, they really defined what the expectations were across grade levels. The measurement and data used to be the same domain, but now they separated them into two separate domains. Elementary standards removed money at one point, but now have added money back in. Grades three to five focused on reasoning about fractions with visual fraction models. And grade eight includes radical expressions, rational and irrational numbers. And then there are also, all of the content areas now have the climate change opportunities. So along with the math standards, there's also climate change for math. So there's standards specifically to be used within the math curriculum that support climate change standards. Over the past year and moving forward, our professional development really focused on differentiating instruction in math. We focused the math task force, created unit plans, and that's, we're continuing that work throughout the upcoming school year within the grade levels, is really creating those unit plans and each having differentiated resources. So that way teachers don't have to go find resources to better support the learning and the lesson. They have access to them in one document. We also continuing our STAR data training for the high school. At this point, K, starting from kindergarten to grade 10, our students test, use the STAR as a benchmark assessment. So we're continuing training at the high school. And then LMS has a new math program, Experience Math. The old program was Connected Math, and it expired. The contract ended, but also the program was no longer, it just expired. The company didn't have, we didn't have access to the program through the company. So we went with Experience Math moving. And then some of the resources, we're continuing the programs, the after-school tutoring opportunities. Again, through the High Impact Tutoring Grant, we're, we're able to provide additional tutoring opportunities for students. Then we do have our Smile, our Smile Math Program in the summertime. It's a summer math institute where students can take remedial classes, but can also take. And then we really focused this year on providing high-quality resources for our staff across grade levels and really targeting the grade levels based on our needs. So you'll see, like Generation Genius is for K8. We did Reflex and Refrax for grades two to four, because that's where we saw the biggest need for fraction support and number fluency. What? Freckle, Buzz Math for six to eight, and then some other programs that we have. Any questions on math before I move on to science? Yes. So the NJSLA, the NJSLS climate change standards, the state has created this climate change, these group, these group of standards that are based around climate change, and basically has aligned different standards to different content areas. So a lot of the math ones are problem-based. So if there's, you know, some, and off the top of my head, I can't think of a, a math problem, but you know, maybe in elementary school, we're comparing temperatures over time to see, you know. So that, that's kind of how they've, they've been able to adjust it to the different content areas. Okay. That is eighth grade math? That is too high for my math. I am not sure. Yes, I'm sure it is something that has to do with square roots and, you know, I don't. Okay, so science. Science is slightly different than math in ELA. Science is administered in students, for students in grades five, eight, and 11. And it provides a snapshot over the, over the years that they're not assessed. It, it kind of groups, it assesses all of the standards from, or the, an overview of the standards for the years that they have not been assessed. It focuses on the application of science skills, so it's not, you know, what is the sun? It's more about, you know, the application of the skills that they've learned about the sun. And it focuses on designing solutions to real-world problems. So there's a lot of investigating, sense-making, you know, critiquing if there's a problem, the here's the solution, what would you do differently? So that's a lot, that's what we see a lot with the NJSLA science assessment. This, uh, it, the performance levels for science are, there are four levels, and NJSLA math and ELA have five, but for some reason, science has four. And they are, level one is below proficient, and four is advanced proficient. And levels three and four, when we talk about proficiency and we talk about meeting expectations, we're talking about levels three and four. No. There might be a multiple choice question or two, but most of it is written response. Same with ELA and math. There's a lot of written response. Yes. No, no, it's a, it's a lot of written response. Yeah, a lot of written expectations in the, in these assessments. Notable achievements, these are some of the things that we saw this year. We saw increases in grades five and eight. And I'll talk a little bit more about grade 11 when we get there, but we are seeing positive, positive growth in science as well. You'll see participation rates here, grades five, eight, and 11, similar to NJSLA. So this is over three-year comparison. So the state only, we only have three years, this is, this will be the year of NJSLA science. So we don't have, we can't go far further back than 2022. But you'll see, we're steadily, steadily increasing those meeting and exceeding expectations. Because it's a newer assessment, as we learn more about the assessment and the expectations and the type of prompts that students are getting, the better we can modify our pacing and our, our curriculum to support the needs and the expectations of the, the assessment. This is a comparison over time. So you'll see grade five over time, grade eight, and grade 11. The one thing I do want to point out, grade 11, which we talk about often in our administrative teams, is these 11th graders take this assessment after already taking the NJGPA, already taking a full month of AP assessments. And after, they don't take the, the, they don't take, after grade nine, they don't take an assessment in grade 10. So they miss a year of taking an assessment, and then they're bombarded with all of these assessments. So when you look at the grade 11 scores, just keep that in mind, that our students are, you know, are in a difficult situation at that time of the year when they are trying to get to the end of the year and have a bunch of assessments that they need to take from the state. But we do see positive growth in the other grade levels. So this is the percent of students compared to the state. Similar to the other two, the district is in maroon, and then the state is in gray. And just like the other two assessments, we also report on, on subgroups. Yes.
I guess my question, so my perspective is number. Sixty percent of our students are not meeting their expectations, right? But then you look at the state, 28% are all immediate. It's not, it's more than 70% in the state don't meet expectations. So I guess, this sort of, I'm curious as to, do you have an opinion on how relevant this test is? It's like, that's a, that's, this is an outstanding. Over 70% of the students in the state don't meet expectations, right? I mean, that's, that's my, so, so that's sort of begs the question, like, how relevant is this? Are they, are we so bad in this state? Or is, or is the test not particularly, not that relevant?
So, oh, sorry. The, um, the first part of that is, we're, this is the, they meet expectations on this assessment, right? So it's not they're meeting expectations towards the standards, because we have other data to show us that and other information. Like, if you look at our AP scores at our national assessment, or our SAT, or our PSAT, like, those are national assessments that are, our scores are, we do very well in those. So this, these scores are just on meeting expectations of the NJSLA science assessment. So that, that's the first piece. And the second piece is clearly, Steve, you're absolutely right. Grade eight, 18% of students are meeting expectations across the state. It's a state conversation. You know, part of my, my role, I'm part of the Burton County Curriculum Consortium, and one of the things that we've been talking about in our consortium a lot is just this assessment, just this, just this. Not ELA, not math, just this assessment, because the expectations on this assessment don't match the instruction and the standards that are actually being required of us. So the state is looking at a new assessment platform. And we've been advocating with the state to really take the educators into consideration when they're putting, when they're making a decision on what kind of assessment that they're going to purchase next at the state level. So, yeah, you're exactly correct. This is not the best. But it's still a requirement, and that's the part that is hard.
The kids aren't learning what they need to learn, or they're, they're not tested. Obviously, it is.
There absolutely is. And it's, it's also the way that it's tested, when it's tested, the testing environments. It's, there's a lot of variables that also play into part that, like, you know, it's, it's not fair. It's not fair to the kids that, you know, our, our kids, especially in science and math, our STEM programs are phenomenal. We've seen, you saw the AP scores last time. Like, our kids do very well in those scores and in those content areas that this is just, this is not a great reputation. Fair that districts have to present this when it's really, it's not on the districts. It's more, it's a bigger picture of a state, state assesses these students. Going back to here, to our subgroups. You'll see that our, our subgroup for our students, our Black African-American students, it is zero because not, it didn't score earlier last year, but because they were under the reporting group, so we could not, we could not report them. Same students with 504s. And our inter- and improvements, along with the curriculum. So the standards for this, for science weren't new this year, but we focused a lot of professional development, and we will focus professional development this upcoming school year on how to incorporate real-world cases and data analysis into our science and, and into existing science courses. So we don't have a standalone earth science course at the high school, which is normal. That's not something that's, you know, that is specific to Leonia. But our, one of our focuses this year for the science department is to think about more, think more about how we can combine the earth science standards into the existing courses and giving real, more real-world cases for those earth science standards. And a professional development, you know, continuing with the, just the theme of the whole PD for the year, and part of our professional development plan is using our district assessment data to inform and, you know, determine our instructional strategies that we use. And then using those tools, like we've talked about, like our DNA platform and our NearPod, and linking that all to our assessments. And then we've added some additional resources as well. And this goes back to Jenna, so I am, any questions? Any final?
I, I have some questions. Sorry. You know, the state would want them to report by, like, subgroups, like by gender, by race. Are we actually using that data to, I don't know, improve our, that, our curriculum? Like, looking at the score by female, male, Asian, Asian, it just, it makes me wonder, like, why do we look at it this way, and how are we using that information?
So that information is important when you see discrepancies, right? So if we see a higher, so when we look at a higher, this is 40% of our students, but then our subgroups are showing below 20, 20 or below, that's where there's a discrepancy, right? That's 20% difference between.
That makes sense, but it's more for gender and race.
So the same thing for that too, right? The same thing. If we had, so this is a bad example, but if we had, well, actually, so, right? We have 40% of our, all, our whole populations, grade five, eight, and 11 are meeting expectations, but only 22% of our Hispanic population is, or 28% of our Hispanic population is meeting expectations. So there's a discrepancy between, so that's what we really look for, is discrepancies between our subgroups and our general population. And that's where we focus, that's where we really target that instruction. What can we be doing better to meet, meet the learning needs of our students in these populations? Yeah.
Thank you. My other question is about the resources and programs, especially for LA and math. I, I saw a long list of, you know, these resources. How are they deployed out to the teachers? We have a wide range of age groups with a different level of experiences. Some teachers, and I know they have developed their own excellent way of instruction. They may have their own preference. How are we balancing all those differences?
So we like to take a slow and steady approach here. You know, we like, yes, our teachers all have access, all of these different grade levels and content areas have access to these resources right now. But we do this over time a little bit, because we don't want to overwhelm or bombard, right? Because there's very different levels. So there's some teachers that, or some staff members that will just jump in and start using these products, right? They'll just be like, oh, cool, I'm going to start using Generation Genius tomorrow, that's great. And some need a little bit more support. So we plan our professional development with our vendors throughout the debt, throughout the year. So we have, like, a Reflex, that's our new math for number fluency for grades two to four. We have a PD scheduled for November, our November PD day. We'll have the vendor come in and do a training for the staff then. So they'll take an hour out of that PD afternoon to do that training. You know, we have Generation Genius, we have, you know, we have that scheduled for later in the year. We have Age of Learning, we have, because it's specifically for grade levels, we're going to do it at a faculty meeting. So we do these webinars, and we do these, we share these programs with our teachers. We give them the access, and then we slowly kind of roll them out, so that way they, they can figure out what works for them. And then there's obviously no, there's no mandate to use these in the first year. We like to see them get comfortable and get exposure to it. We provide them, we want to provide them with opportunities to see the inaction in other school, in other classrooms within their grade level. So a lot of these PLCs and common planning meetings are helpful, because that's where teachers can share these resources and share the excitement for that. So if I really like Reflex, I'm going to share it with you, and then, you know, you're going to get that excitement as well.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
I, I know they didn't do the testing during the COVID years, but with the testing having started back up again at, like before and then after, is, are these results being used to look at the impacts of education and learning that were created by COVID? And if so, like, does it show any particular grades or more severely impacted by it?
You mean in Leonia or at a broader level?
Well, I mean, ideally Leonia, but it seems like what you're saying, this is more like for the state, state's use. But I was curious, well, I mean, to be specific, I mean, I have, has the administration looked at these results to see if it looks like there was an impact in Leonia?
So, I mean, yes, but we're also, like, we're making assumptions that, you know, it's hard to tell that, right? Because there's obviously a lot of variables that are involved when you're looking at, uh, assessment data. But that's why the more we look at the data and the more we really dive into it and then we can figure out, you know, we, we, we can go deep, deep enough to know if a child has been here even for their entire. Like if we're looking at math data for a subgroup and we see that, you know, grade five is really struggling with math. We can really look at, okay, where are they struggling, right? If they're struggling with fractions, grade five, that was three years ago, they're in grade two, three. Fractions is a major part of grade three, it's a major work in grade three. That's where their fraction development starts. So that's what we kind of piece together here when we look at data. We really kind of think about, okay, let's look back and figure out where the holes are and maybe why. And then I'm sure at the state level, they're looking at this across the board and saying, you know, there's areas and gaps too. But I think those studies will be hard to, to do right now. But I think in a few years, we'll start seeing more of that research on COVID, post-COVID development. And the state has the, I know the state and the, the federal government has started changing the developmental levels of student, of expectations for children. So that's a whole nother topic.
Thank you. Yeah, because the concern is, I mean, from anecdotal, just, you know, things I've read in articles, I've seen that students that were in elementary school during COVID were, were the most impacted by this. You know, for your middle school, high school, you're a little more developed and you, you have, you know, better skills to manage. But the kids that were younger were really hurt the most. Just curious if, I mean, there's so much data here. Like is the state doing anything, you know, are we doing anything to really look at and see? And, and I think there were some, I believe, I remember seeing that we had there were either grants that were issued or we may have even received some of those to help with the kids that are, I think there's the ones that are still in elementary school now. But what about the kids that were in elementary school and have moved on since then that are still struggling? Are they being looked at, you know, is there anything being done to, to assist and make sure that they're doing okay?
So we, we had COVID money and we already speak to that, the high impact tutoring grant, things that we had along those lines. What's interesting about using this data to look at a COVID impact is this, and Dr. Meister, this goes back to the point that Dr. Meister made before. What the state does, the state changes cut scores from year to year, right? And so the, so the, the validity of the data from a year to year cohort comparison is, is really rather suspect. And I, one of, one of the slides before, it showed like an eighteen percent difference between one year to the next. Well, the kids didn't become eighteen percent smarter from one year to the next, right? Someone, somewhere, a psychometrician, um, changed that score, right? And so I think to the purpose of your question, Mr. Lee, there's been a wide variety of data on the national level that shows that on average, students in a variety of districts have lost up to two years of reading level based upon the COVID impact. That number, uh, what all the data shows and the research shows is that that number is mostly driven by socioeconomic status and support inside of schools. And so what we're seeing is that we are not seeing a clear downturn in the capacity of our students that are anecdotally or on paper right now. Where that will come alive and we're years away from it is when we begin to see when they take these massive tests that are nationwide, the SATs, the PSATs, when they're given to tens of thousands of students over the course of many years. You begin to get a sense of that data. What we're not seeing, what we're not seeing is that we're not seeing, uh, a behavioral learning component in which it's very, very clear that the COVID impact of being home and being, having the difficulty in, in, in supporting your child while also working remotely, has had a long lasting impact upon children. And each year we're finding that the children, as the younger they are, they're more and more revert to the expectations that we had over the previous years. So a town such as Leonia and a town such as Edgewater, they weather.
Thank you. See you next year.